All that studying we did, passed it. I passed my objective assessment, y'all, on the first try. Yeah. I'm officially done with intro to IT. Let's go, let's go. This, your girl's over here doing it, like, no, for real, like, hold on now, like, yes, you're self-taught, but baby, you can do this, like, you're getting a degree in this, babe, like, and who's gonna stop you, like? There it is, y'all, objective assessment. Attempt one, which is today three twelve, pass. Yes, sir. Course, passed. Yes, sir. Well, the fiber optic cable, so that's what I was looking at, so. The fiber optic cable, it says that it transmits large volumes of data using the concept of reflection of light through a core made of glass or plastic. So the fiber transmits data by light to a receiving end where the light signal is decoded as data. So, and it can transmit large volumes of data, so not only is it, um, more technically, more reliable than any sort of data model that uses electricity, because this is the only one that uses light and light would always be available even if electricity is not. So that would also be like in the event of an outage or something like that, if there was an option to use a technology source that can move data. Fiber optics would be at the top of the list. Okay, so for wireless transmission, electromagnetic waves of different frequencies like infrared and radio waves can be used to transmit data within a network. So those are the frequencies which, um, use, or that Wi-Fi and Bluetooth as well as field communication use. So electromagnetic waves like infrared and radio and radio waves. So electromagnetic waves, the radio waves, and different frequencies are used to transmit data within a network using Wi-Fi, Bluetooth, and field communication, so maybe even like walkie-talkies too. So anything that is wireless. And then combining the networks, so a LAN network can be connected to create a larger network and sometimes become a wide area network. So if you combine multiple local area networks, um, that only have a few devices or local area networks um, for like small offices and maybe they combine offices and you can combine multiple local area networks to create a larger wide area network depending on where or the range or the distance that they cover. So the LAN can be connected to create, yes, honey, a larger network. Okay, so it can be connected to create a larger network and sometimes become a wide area network. And so these networks, these connected networks can expand and increase communication. So they can be used to connect networks, so connected networks can expand and increase communication. Okay, where you going? Okay, so these can be used to connect networks, so the repeaters, these extend the range of the cabling types, okay. So for example, extending, okay, so that's what they mean, so even something as simple as, you know how, um, back in the day, I don't know if you're familiar, but back in the day, um, my family used to, you know, my, my babysitters used to be in the projects and they would have, um, yeah, like, they would be running like cable lines from, from across, like, across the way, like, across the way, like, buildings down, they're running cable lines from one person's house, so I guess that could be considered as combining a network, right, because if you're taking cable from one person's house, you're taking it from their cable, you're connecting yourself to that cable, and if multiple cable lines are connected, then you're going from just a local area network where that coaxial cable is covering one, you know, one set of devices in one location to that, that cable network now may be covering multiple households and multiple households are using that one primary house's cable by way of extending the range with additional cables, so, yeah, if you're familiar with people possibly or growing up in an area to see people, you know, kind of jacking cable off of people, um, this is basically what they were doing, they were combining their networks. So repeaters, um, they, so they, they were extending the range of the cabling types. So connections can be made by increasing the strength, yeah, by increasing the strength of the network signal. Precisely, so when people were stealing cable, they were using extenders and repeaters. Okay, so bridges are used to connect to different types of network and provide management of the message. So they're used to connect to different types of networks and provide management of the messages. Switches are used on local area networks to reduce network traffic by management of network messages. So these are used on LANs to reduce the network traffic by managing the network messages. And the routers, the routers manage the network traffic by having a routing table of known devices. Okay. Okay. So the architecture of the internet, so the architecture of the internet, so initially, the internet began as a research project in the nineteen sixties funded by DARPA. I'm sure you've probably heard of DARPA because I feel like I've been seeing a lot of stories recently where there's just a lot of DARPA talk. But the DARPA is the Department of Advanced Research Project Agency. And DARPA hoped to develop a method for linking multiple computer networks, allowing them to function as a single system unaffected by disasters. And generally, um, in the previous sections, they talked about how that was, that's part of like a business, um, I believe it's like a business disaster plan and then under the business disaster plan, it's under business continuity with really having the ability to where if there, if a disaster does take place in one area, that the system would, wouldn't be totally taken down and that there would be other networks to cover in the event that other systems went down because of a natural disaster. So DARPA hoped to develop a method for linking multiple computer networks, allowing them to function as a single system unaffected by disasters. So, and the internet began as a research project funded by the Department of Advanced Research Projects Agency. And this started as a research project. Um, so the three tier of ISPs. So ISPs are internet service providers and they're classified in three tiers depending on the role they play in the overall internet structure. So the three tier of ISPs classified in tiers depending on the role they play in overall internet structure. So tier one is the least common, this one serves as the backbone of the internet and consists of high speed, high capacity international WAN networks, wide area networks. Typically operated by large communication companies, AT&amp;T, Verizon. Okay, yeah, that might be true, so least common, so it says that it serves as the backbone of the internet and consists of high speed, high capacity international wide area networks, so typically these are operated by large communication companies, the examples given were AT&amp;T and Verizon, so essentially, they have the widest um, and most internationally available networks. And the wide, the widest and most available international networks are AT&amp;T and Verizon. So then when we go into tier two, the tier two is more common in regional in scope, so tier one and tier two are networks of routers that collectively provide the internet's common infrastructure. So the tier two are just more common in regional in scope, so likely everything else, I think it's just tier one that's more so international and then everything else would fall under tier two. Okay, I'm sorry, no, so, so most common in regional in scope falls under tier two. Tier three is the, okay, so tier three is access ISPs and independent internets that are also called intranets operated by a single organization, okay. So tier three, even though ISPs are internet service providers, but, okay. So tier three are independent internets, okay. So tier three ISPs are intranets and they consider, they consider intranets to be their own, um, their own internet provider, so the devices used to connect to the access ISP are called systems or hosts. Common connecting technologies are telephone lines, cables, and satellites. So, okay, so hmm, okay. And so I guess tier one are the the service providers that have the widest area of network extending internationally, tier two is pretty much every one else. But then tier three are organizations that have their own intranets. Um, and likely their own network in terms of like, um, in terms of, yeah, so basically it would be service providers that that provide that access, but then they can provide it possibly commercially. So that's, so maybe that's what I'm thinking about, so tier two is tier two is everyone else on a personal individual level, tier three are access providers that can provide independent internet, so basically they can provide commercial, commercial cable internet services, they can provide that to a business, so tier three is like commercial business internet services, tier two is individual services, tier one is the only ones that are open to a wide area network and internationally, okay. So I think I got it, so hold on, once again, so tier one, so tier one are international, so international and wide area networks, examples are AT&amp;T and Verizon. Tier two are everyone else but on an individual level, so tier two would also be the wide area networks, but it would also fall under, um, it would be under the, the local, I'm sorry, it would be under the wide area networks, but for all the other providers and also in an individual capacity based on consumers. And then tier three are the, the internet service providers that provide commercial services. The commercial ISP services, right, so like the commercial, so like how Comcast might have their cellphone service where they can provide you cable at home, but maybe it, Comcast may fall under tier three when they are providing commercial services where they're supporting an intranet or they're supporting a special phone line that it would maybe fall under a tier three, whereas maybe Comcast where they're just providing cable services to someone's residential home would fall under a tier two, so I also realize that it might depend on to whom the service is being provided to. In terms of those tiers, it depends on who the service is being provided to, however, tier one, I don't think tier one matters, I think it's just tier two and tier three, it just depends on who the service is being provided to. With tier one being the individual and tier three being the business and the organizations. Um, okay. Internet networking systems use addressing systems to assign unique identifier to each computer in the network using IP addresses, so the internet networking systems, they use addressing systems to assign unique identifiers to each computer in the network using IP addresses. So essentially, you receive an IP address every single time you connect to some network, so when you are connecting to different Wi-fis, depending on the ISP that is hosting that Wi-Fi, your device would then be assigned an address on that network while you were connected and that address essentially says and gives the information of where you, what, what network you're actually connected to. And so that's, yeah, so I think that's the point, so each computer and so it assigns a unique identifier to each computer in the network using IP addresses. IP stands for internet protocol, so internet protocol addresses, now the ICANN, so the ICANN is the internet corporation for assigned names and numbers and they coordinate the internet's operations and can award blocks of consecutively numbered IP addresses for ISPs. So for the internet service providers, they can actually, um, ask for a block of, of, uh, IP addresses so that way they already have a list of IP addresses for when people are using their network at any given time. Specifically for if it is a larger network that is maybe for an organization like Wi-Fi or something like, you know, company Wi-Fi or something like that. So ICANN assign names and numbers coordinates the internet's operations and can award blocks of consecutively numbered IP addresses to ISPs. So they can award blocks of consecutively numbered IP addresses to ISPs. Then the ISPs assign IP addresses to machines in their region, so to the machines that are connecting to their network, they would then assign the IP addresses as necessary. So the IPv4 addresses, it says it's traditionally written in dotted decimal notation with the bytes of the address separated by periods, so that's how IP addresses, as far as I can remember, that's how they're normally, they're normally written, right? So like with the, with the dots, oh, I'm sorry, so with the dots here, so normally that's how it's normally written. So that is the IPv4 address and that's written in dotted decimal notation, that's fine. But then they have IPv6 addresses and those were written in hexadecimal. So they, they have the, uh, the semicolon in between each number instead of just a dot, there's a semicolon in between. And those are IPv6 addresses and it's called being written in hexadecimal instead of dotted decimal. So alternate systems, they access the machines using mnemonic names, so abbreviation, okay, and mnemonic means an abbreviation or nickname for a machine function. So, um, the example would be dot com for commercial, right, dot gov for government, dot edu for education. So that's what it means, um, when, when you're accessing something that has a mnemonic name, it's an abbreviation or a nickname for um, the function of that website. And then the DNS, the domain name system. This is the decentralized system that translates human readable domain names into numerical IP addresses. Ie, internet protocol. Sample any website URL, so the, the domain name would be any website URL such as google.com, bean.com, gmail.com, whatever the actual website name is, that's what the domain name is. And the hierarchies, so organize hierarchical hierarchically without, with the root DNS at the top that directs the request to the TLD servers, the top level domain servers. So hold on, let me go to the other page so I can figure out what I'm even talking about here. Top level domain, so it includes extensions like dot com, dot edu, dot net and country codes like AU or dot UK. So DNS resolution, so this is the process of translating domain name into an IP address, okay. So, and then every domain has to be registered with ICANN and ICANN are the ones who then issue out the IP addresses for these particular, um, networks. But every domain has to be registered so that way there can be an, an address for the domain. So network protocols. And so the network protocols, these are rules, procedures, and formats that govern the communication of multiple devices over a network. So like I was saying before, I'm pretty sure like the protocols would be the equivalent of like when you're at work and you're trying to go on a website and maybe some pop-up is coming up and so it just blocks your whole entire page. Likely there are network protocols being put in place so that way there's certain communication that cannot come through into their network, ie, you know, inappropriate stuff. So all that stuff, they put network protocols in place so that way their rules, their procedures, and their formats are governing the communication of multiple devices on their network. Did you get that? Alright, got it. So SMTP, so Simple Mail Transfer Protocol. So this supports the email transmission using DNS, so the domain name system or the domain name system to identify the recipient of the email and send a message over the internet to a mail server where where it can be retrieved using protocols like POP3 and IMAP. So hold on, let me get, let, let me, let me simmer that down a bit, hold on. A transfer protocol allows emails to be transmitted using a domain, a domain name system to identify the recipient of the email. So likewise, okay, so I understand because technically if websites are all, if websites are, um, if everything was all and there was no translation, then we would all have to know the IP addresses for every single device that we want to send information to, but in this case, it's saying that it supports the email transmission by using those domain names so we can have email addresses and not IP addresses. And, um, once we do that, the DNS can identify the recipient of the email, send a message to a mail server where it will then be retrieved using email protocols. And likely those email protocols will then be able to push that through and, um, and consider the dom, the domain names um, and the email addresses. And POP3 is Post Office Protocol and IMAP is Internet Message Access Protocol. And VoIP, VoIP, if you've ever worked in a call center, VoIP, that's what they would be using, I used to work in a call center where we used softphone, I think that's what it was. Yeah, we use like, um, we use softphone and so softphone would be the equivalent of a VoIP system, so it's used for voice communication over the internet and same thing. Um, it was one of those things where once we had our computer, we were able to log in as long as we had internet, Wi-Fi, whatever, we were able to log into that system and we're not on the phones, but we're on the computer, so yes, this VoIP, um, it's used for voice communication over the internet by establishing a connection between two devices, then performing realtime two-way. Precisely, so establishing a connection between two devices which would generally be your headset and the computer and that's all it would need and then you're performing real, realtime two-way getting phone calls over the internet, so not wired, right, not having to be on a physical phone, but you're getting that communication directly over the internet. So used for voice communication over the internet, establishing a connection between two devices, then performing realtime two-way. Okay, transmission of voice data, so softphones, exactly, I literally just like wrote that note down and I'm just reading it. So yeah, so softphones allow two or more computers to share a call without any additional hardware. Same thing, because my supervisors were able to jump into a call from their computer, they would, they didn't have to, you know, worry about coming over to my desk, they could literally tap in because the whole entire system was connected to the internet. So, okay, and analog telephone adapters allow users to connect phones to a port that digitizes them, then transmit real light, realtime voice data. So even if you're using an analog phone, you would need an adapter in order to connect your phone into your computer and be able to use that analog phone, um, in a digital way, so it digitizes them. Um, once they're able to use a telephone adapter. So streaming, streaming transports audio and video near realtime, so large-scale streaming services, they use content delivery networks, so a CDN is a content delivery network and we said it's transporting audio and video in a realtime. So CDNs are groups of servers distributed strategically over the internet that stream copies of content to nearby end users, so Anycast networking technology enables end users to connect to the closest server automatically. So, yeah, I mean Netflix uses, Netflix uses, um, CDNs, um, I believe Hulu, pretty much all of the streaming networks would be using CDNs, YouTube and pretty much any, yeah, like I think any, any large um, streaming service or anything in particular that live streams audio or video would be using content delivery networks. Um, and then the world wide web. So, okay, and then it says, I'm sorry, before I get to the world wide web, so it says the CDN is a group of servers distributed strategically over the internet that stream copies of content to nearby end users. So that's the content delivery network, it is a group of servers that are distributed across the internet that stream copies of content to end users. The world wide web, so this is composed of hypertext document format and, um, embedding hyperlinks into other documents, so a protocol for transferring hypertext over the network and a server process that supplies hypertext pages upon a request. Okay, so web browsers and servers allow users to access hypertext, HTTP protocols or similar are used to transfer data between servers and browsers, so HTTP protocols, um, or similar are used to transfer data between servers and browsers. URLs and that stands for Uniform Resource Locator. The URL includes the protocol, so and the domain and all the subdomains plus the resource path for the file. The resource path ID and the name of the document. Okay, and the name of the document, yeah, because my highlighter is running out. Yeah, this is much better, okay. Yeah, this is much better, um, alright, so actually let me go through and highlight these again because this is much better, I was using these highlighters down to nothing. Mm-hmm, this supposed to be pink, but I can't even see it anymore. Okay, yeah, this is better, okay, so HTML, Hypertext Markup Language, so HTML is a way of encoding a document. Um, the tags describe how the document should display, what multimedia resources do and which elements within the document are linked to other, uh, documents. The XML, this stands for Extensible Markup Language, so first let me, so okay, so XML provides a standardized style for designing notational systems for representing data as text files. And the information is wrapped in tags and it provides And the information is wrapped in tags and it provides a standardized style For designing notational systems representing data as text. Okay, so network security, so we have malware and malware Is malicious software, so any software intentionally designed to cause damage to a computer Server, client or computer network. So malware malicious software. And again, any software intentionally designed to cause damage to a computer server client or computer network. A virus is a software program that in infects a computer by inserting itself into programs that already reside In the machine. So malware is in intent intended to cause damage. A virus is intention is intended on infecting And inserting it in itself into programs. A worm is an autonomous program that forwards copies of itself to other machines in a network. So a worm is basically duplicating itself and duplicating itself um And then copying to other external places. Spyware resides on the computer collecting information about the computer activities and reporting back to the instigator. Spyware, so spyware is like basically stealing secrets, they're like stealing government secrets basically. They're collecting information and reporting back. Phishing is Used to obtain private information by asking for it, so phishing phishing is like when you see something that looks awfully Like what it's supposed to look, but it's just not all the way there and really once you put your personal information, they will just gather that. Um and you know, go about committing whatever crime they're gonna commit. Um but phishing is used to obtain private information by just asking for it, so they send emails Or anything, they could create websites posing as a legitimate business, asking for information and once you put it in Then they have your, then they have your your data. And then DOS attack is a process of overloading a computer with messages. And it results in the net suffocating the network resources, so DOS attack is basically like Um I'm trying to think, there's a, there's a way to explain When they flood, when when you try um everything to Like you try every known password to get into something, I think, I can't remember if it's called jailbreak, but I think we'll get to that, but yeah, DOS attack is basically, yeah, like overloading the system Until it crashes or you suffocate the network resources. The MTM attack is the man in the middle and so this one is the attacker intercepts the data as it's traveling To or from the victim's device, including auth credentials, so MTM is the man in the middle attack. So this one is, they are collecting, they're intercepting your data as you're transferring it. The brute force, okay, so this is what I was actually, what I was meaning to to compare the last one to. So I was meaning to compare that that DOS attack to the brute force attack. So the brute force attack uses all possible combinations to learn a user's password. So in those type of attacks, likely they'll write an algorithm that will just continue to just keep trying random Combinations of your password until it figures it out. And that's called a brute force attack cuz it uses all possible combinations until it learns the user's password. The dictionary attack is performed by an attacker by using an application And a large dictionary file with words and when they run the application, it tries to identify the password by trying multiple words from that file. I don't know if that's like a good or bad attack, I really don't find that to be like useful at all, but And then the rainbow tables, those try to identify the hash value of the password and then convert it into plain text. And that's the rainbow tables. So protection and risk management, so Protection and risk management, the firewalls are a prevention technique To filter the traffic passing through a point in the network. So firewalls, basically, yeah, they filter the traffic passing through to make sure Um that any messages um are being blocked if they are coming from an untrustworthy source. So they're blocking outgoing messages with certain destination addresses. And they're also blocking incoming messages from untrustworthy sources. Now the proxy server. So proxy server, the software that acts as an intermediary between a client and a server to shield The client from adverse events, adverse actions of the server, so the proxy server Acts as an intermediary between the client and the server. To shield the client from adverse actions of the server. And isn't it the client that requests from the server, so um So okay, so I understand, so basically if the server is being hacked into The proxy server acts as a verification tool to kind of verify before The request gets to the server to make sure that that request is safe for the server to then fulfill, okay. So that's that's the best way that I'm that I'm thinking that a proxy server works, so So antivirus software detects and removes known viruses from the network. Network auditing software monitors network behavior such as origin of traffic and volume. The purpose of network vandalism is to disrupt the network encryption and codes information to keep it confidential even if the data is stolen, okay. Support the hardening of systems you work with by installing security patches, maintain a good antivirus and change your passwords frequently. Okay, so lesson five. Okay, so lesson five, computer software, so application and system software, so the software can be divided into Application and system software, the system software being the general purpose software That is used to operate computer hardware and provides a platform to run the application software. That is used to operate, so okay, so yeah, I think this is the one that I was trying to understand, so The system software is general purpose software, so there is Software that has to connect with the hardware and well, I mean, I guess, yeah, like the the main operating system, so And this is used to operate the computer hardware, so essentially the operating systems on any device Are the general purpose software, those are the system software, Mac OS Um iPhone, iOS, Android, whatever it is, those are all the system softwares. So the so the system software essentially provides the infrastructure needed to run the application software. And it allows it to interface with the hardware of the computer system, so The system software can be divided into utility and operating system, so operating systems containing the user interface And the kernel of the operating system, so Operating system as in the Android store, as in the Apple store, as in this Particular UI in an iPhone and the particular UI. And then Android would be considered as system software. And then application software is specific purpose software used to perform a specific task. So think productivity or collaboration tools, essentially any other app That you are downloading onto your system other than everything that just naturally came with it. Um would be considered application software, whereas the system software Is the general most bare minimum software that your system needs to run. And then the operating system, so that's the software that manages the computer hardware and Software resources and provides common services for computer programming, for computer programs. So again, the operating system is the software that manages the computer hardware and Software resources, so the operating system manages both the hardware and the software resources Within the system, so the operating system is not just the software, but it also is in connection with the hardware. Um and again, it provides the common services, so performing basic tasks like file management Memory management. So the bare minimum that you can do on your on your systems. The ability to, so basically the software um provides a UI. So it's like the operating system and the system software provide a UI to support everything that's already happening in the backend, so Um in order to be able to like store your data. Maybe if you didn't have the software component of a computer, you wouldn't be able to see how much data you have Other than looking physically into your computer, but with the operating system and the system software You have memory in your computer and then you can go on your screen and actually see that you have memory on your computer. Thanks to the operating system and the system software. So it performs basic tasks like file management, memory management, process management, so same thing. It has a CPU, it has memory storage, but we wouldn't know that if there wasn't software on the computer to actually show us that. Um it's handling input and output and controlling peripheral devices. Now, the operating systems fall into two categories, which are the network operating systems or the desktop operating systems, so Desktop operating systems are Linux, Mac and Windows. Linux is open source and can be modified and distributed by anyone around the world. Um the mobile operating systems run specifically for the device. Android examples like Android or iOS. Now, the utility software extends the capability of an operating system and helps customize the operating system's function. So software to compress data, play multimedia or handle network connections. Okay, so kernel contains the operating system components that perform the basic functions Required by the computer installation, so the file manager, yeah, pretty much that's the basic function. Which whose function is to coordinate the machine's storage, so Yeah, that the kernel contains the operating system components that perform the basic functions. And the DOS stands for Disk Operating System, so The users and interface, they allow the end users to communicate with the operating system. So the you, so the interface and the Main ones are the command line interface, which is the CLI. So this user interface communicates with end users through textual images using a keyboard and monitor, so If you've ever, if you've ever used the command line, that's what that interface is. And then the other end of that is the graphical user interface, which is essentially what we see on our computers every day. When we go on there, we see the options, we see the images, um you know, we can Adjust the files to display in um list format and all sorts of different formats, that's part of the UI. So user interface, it allows end users to communicate with the operating system. The graphical user interface allows end users to issue commands through input devices such as mouses, keyboards Or touchscreens as well as the options that are actually like on your screen. The OS users, um so the OS is tasked with protecting the computer's resources From unauthorized users, user account is a record within the operating system with information like Name, password and privileges. Okay, so file management, file managers are able to bundle files into directories or folders. Directories can be placed into other directories resulting in a hierarchical structure, so that's for the file management. In Linux file managers, the structure starts with the top home level and with all of the additional names in lowercase. So let me see, let me see what Linux file management looks like. Okay, so you can download different file managers. Okay, and then the memory management, a component of the operating system's kernel. The memory manager manages the system's primary main memory. The memory manager finds and assigns the main memory space for each process and restricts actions Based on memory allocation settings, so again, those memory allocation settings, you'll find those in your computer settings as well. And so you realize that there's a certain percentage of memory that's being allocated to each um Default program in your computer or when you um when you download additional applications. You might find that maybe, yeah, like now it's taking a certain percentage of memory out of your system to like save stuff on that application. And then the memory manager can also rotate programs and data between the primary and secondary memory using a technique called paging. An additional memory created by paging is called virtual memory. Okay, so the device drivers, so the kernel of an operating system stores a collection of device drivers. The device drivers translate generic requests into technical steps required to complete the task. Okay, and then middleware that communicates with controllers or other peripheral devices. And so these are drivers, so drivers are the middleware that communicate with the controllers And other peripheral devices or other peripheral devices. And they translate requests into technical steps required to complete the task, so Yeah, I I think I could think of an example of that because I know there have been times where Like I remember I had an old camera where in order to um manage any of the Memory files from my camera, I had to download a driver in order for My computer to be able to pick up the camera as an additional device connected, so Yes, in that case, those drivers are acting as middleware because they're allowing Um this driver that you download onto your system then allows you to connect a peripheral device, I E an external device. So we on to something, we got it, we got it, we got it, so other classification and groups. So productivity software, that's the software that people use to complete daily tasks, so examples Microsoft Word, Google Docs, PowerPoint. Um regular software, external software that you're using. Collaboration software, this is the software that helps people communicate and work with one another, so um and kind of more so like um Software that allows people to, yeah, basically to communicate, so Outlook, Slack, Google Docs, Facebook Messenger, any type of messenger. Specialized software performs tasks for a specific purpose, so think creative, think video editing, graphic design. Um so Photoshop, TurboTax, if if they're um if they are specifically like a tax accountant or something like that. YouTube professions like design, medicine, science, finance, games and entertaining Would be using specialized software depending on what they do. And then same thing, I kind of just, you know, put put um a page here with the productivity and collaboration software, so Same thing, we have word pressing, you know, a processing presentation, online workspaces. Um spreadsheets, document storage, multimedia. Okay, so now we have the software architecture classification, so This targets users of the application software, so target users of application software fall Into one of the following category, which are bespoke, off the shelf and hybrid. So bespoke software is custom made, specifically designed for an organization, so Think a small business who didn't use Shopify, but maybe they built their own their own website and it's specifically made for them. And it's, you know, tailored with like a different type of payment processing, it's tailored with a different type of Server and all of the requirements are very unique to that specific small business. Off the shelf software provides a general set of features that are useful to a broad range of users. So off the shelf, um yeah, off the shelf software could be even something like An SEO software where you don't really have to do anything as far as customizing it, you can just go right in And use it and it's useful to you. And then hybrid is a cu- is customized to customized to an organization's needs, so And then I kind of highlighted some of these, so bespoke is really completely custom made, customized to meet Customized to meet a business's needs, the owner maintains control over the output because it's customized for them. The functionality can cover all of the specified business needs because it's, you know, specifically customized for them. And it's internally supported because it's fully customized. However, because it's internally supported, because it's totally customized, the cost is the highest cost out of all three of them. And it takes the longest to develop because again, it's custom made. So off the shelf, we have, it's not, it's not customizable because off the shelf software is intended to be used as purchased. It's vendor controlled, so because it's off the shelf, you don't really have much um leeway in any sort of adjustments. So it's vendor controls, controlled, the functionality really depends on the existing features that are already in the software. Um it's generally vendor and community supported where um maybe they might take feedback from the users. But it is not um, it is not something that you would likely be able to support in-house if it's not fully customizable. And then hybrid gives you the option to kind of be more flexible in terms of customizing. Um you have a little limited control over the customization options, so you may have different options. Um of, you know, how you can customize, but it wouldn't be totally custom made as far as the hybrid goes. Um it can cover all of the business needs, but it also depends on the customization and the options available for that. And this one can be vendor or internally supported because it gives some of that customization. So because of that, there's a possibility that if you can support it internally, because there's a few more options rather than the bare bones basic. You can be more likely to be able to internally support it. The cost is middle ground, middle range and the time has the fastest. Well, not the fastest, but it looks like it says fast implementation when out of the box features are used. But um it would take a little bit longer if there is some customization, even if it's just like. Out of a set of options. Okay, so local and cloud application, so application software stored on individual computers. Cloud computing offloads infrastructure, so local and cloud application, so this application software is stored on individual computers. Cloud computing offloads the infrastructure resource requirements to a service provider. So like we talked about the fact that cloud computing basically removes the pressure of having to maintain any sort of physical space. For physical computers and servers and essentially right puts the requirements on the service provider to just make sure that they provide. Good enough service to cover, you know, different locations as far as the network coverage goes. But the cloud computer, the cloud computing allows for all of the infrastructure to be virtual. Which would span a greater range of distance. And then cloud applications are cloud based software units where cloud based components and local components work together to perform tasks. Software licensing, we have closed source, the closed source does not permit any modification to the operating system code. The open, the open source allows for modifying the system's kernel, the heart of the operating system. Software packing in application that can be installed as a free trial or limited time or functionality. So think most software, yeah, most, you know, softwares and that come with a free trial. They, those are not open source, but rather they might be um. They might be software packing on top of being closed source because they require um. They require a fee in order to access the software or all of the features of the software. Both are protected by end user license agreements and copyright laws. Okay, so patents and software packaging protect unique methods, algorithms or processes embedded within software systems. So the patents, they grant rights for a limited time. Utility patents cover how the item is used and how it works in design, it covers how it looks. So I think, I feel like that was in the pre-assessment, so that's something to keep in mind. So when it comes to software development and patents, the patents only grant you rights for a limited time. The utility, so there is no, from what I can see, this, so it says the patents in the software packaging. Can protect unique methods, algorithms and processes. But again, with that, it only grants you rights for a limited time. Utility patents cover how the items are used and design patents cover how they look. I'm sorry, the utility patents cover how the item is used and how it works and the design patent covers how it looks. Okay, so programming and scripting, so programming refers to writing programs, step by step instructions for the computer to perform an action. Binary is referred to as machine code or machine language, so zeros and ones are binary. Um for code to be executed, it needs to be translated to machine language. The translated solutions are interpreters and and compilers. So these are used to translate programs into machine code, so the compiler translates the source code into machine language. Machine language, which is zero one, and then the checks, then it checks the source code for errors before translating. Specifies the errors and then translate it, translate it out to machine code. So the languages that specify the error, so you generally cannot run the code and even get an error. Um with C, C plus plus, C sharp and Java. The other, so the other languages such as Perl, Python, JavaScript and PHP. These already translate and execute code one line at a time. They convert the instructions one statement at a time when the program is run, so these do not have to be compiled prior to being run. But with the other languages, they have to be compiled prior to being run, so you cannot run it and get the error. The error is going to populate first with the compiled languages and then you would have to fix the error in order for the code to even be able to run. Yeah, so the compiled languages are Java, C plus plus, C, C sharp, Golang, N dot net. And then the interpreted languages are Python, Perl, JavaScript, TCL and PHP. Okay, and then the algorithms, so algorithms are step by step formula outlining how to execute a task. And also can be a mathematical method of solving problems, so. If we are counting the number of each people in a room, we are setting the valuable to a counter, so we would set the valuable to a counter. We would start the counter at zero, then we would create a for loop stating four and then we would put the variable that's going to hold. The place for how many people we're gonna be looping through, so we would do a for loop for N in family. So for the person in this group of people, um every time we count through, we would then increment. This variable by one and that would tell us how many people in, were in the room. And so wrote down a few for loops um and an algorithm. Hold on, then let me, okay, so now we're on to the data section, so databases integrate the information. Stored in systems and maintained by an organization, so. They convert large amounts of data into a usable format to help users make business decisions, so these are databases. They organize data, so database applications can use allowable op- operations to manipulate and transform it. Some database models are flat file, relational, object oriented and hierarchical. So the management of data, so. Database management systems convert, converts large amounts of data into usable format. To help users to make business decisions, so relational databases, they allow information to be accessed from various views. Through internal linking between entries, so relational databases, I believe are databases. That you can create primary keys and secondary keys in. To where they all have one type of common information where you could link each database. Based on the most common denominator or the most um common column or value of data. So like if it's a database where maybe across the organization, you're keeping track of customers. And you're keeping maybe their names and their, you know, dates of birth, that maybe the name would be across multiple databases. They may be found in different named columns, but they would, but the same information would be able to be accessed in multiple databases. And they're accessed through the primary, the primary keys, the rel- the relational databases. So those allow information to be accessed from various views through internal linking between entries. The flat file systems present information from a single point of view and do not at interact with other, other databases and files. So I believe the flat file system would be like an example of um like uh. Microsoft Word, so or like the documents or the documents. Um or yeah, like the documents in your computer, that would be considered a flat file system. Because that is not a database that connects with anything else and it only presents information from a single point of view. There really is no other way to be able to access like your documents on your computer in a spreadsheet, for example. So those flat files give you a single point of view and do not act with other databases and files. And then the database systems, they integrate the information stored and maintained by an organization. And the database research is the act of analyzing and converting data into information to be used in decision making. So across the board data analysis, business analysis, um all fall under the category of taking data. And analyzing it to either be used in a business decision or to be used in forecasting. Um consumer behavior for alignment of products and services. So database systems are the underlying technology that supports the world wide web. So the database management systems, they contain two layers, application layers and the database management layer. So the application layer, it consists of programs and services within a server that queries the database on behalf of the client. When end users access a database through a website, so this would be if they were accessing. The database through an application, the database management system is used as a tool to obtain results after the application software receives a request from the user. And then the database elements, so we have the database table, which is known as the data sheets, it's composed of records and fields that hold data. So it's stored in records and represented as rows in a table with related information, so the columns represent the fields. So you have your tables, you have your database and then you have your multiple different tables within your database. And then within each table, you have your column and then when, within each columns, you may have your um, not the fields, but within. Each column, you have your entries and you have your um, your keys. And then your entries, which are the values. Okay, so the column represents the fields. Okay, so the flat file databases, okay, so back to the flat file databases, so those store data in plain text files. Which where each line of text holds one record, so fields are separated by delimiters like commas or spaces. And flat databases uses, and flat databases use a simple structure and cannot contain multiple tables. The hierarchical databases, so these are one of the oldest database models, the data is organized in a tree structure. With one parent for each record and optional nodes forming subtrees, so these are hierarchical databases. So um I think, I feel like this would likely be a database similar to a NoSQL database. The hierarchical, so it has one parent, so the example is like you have one parent. Um you have one parent record, which is the department and all of the optional nodes might be within the department. The department name, the location, the budget, um and the employee. And then from there, each node, so it, everything would just separate from subtrees. From that one parent. So relational databases, so the relational database, this contains the database tables that can be joined together in logical ways. So the data stored in relational databases have a unique identifier for each record referred to as the primary key. So that's what we talked about with that primary key, creating the, so the primary key creates a relationship among all of the tables. When a primary key is found in another table, this creates a foreign key relationship. So the primary key can be the key in one table and then once we find that same similar data in another table, then this is a foreign key. And then that's how relational databases connect to each other. So primary key and then one is found in another table, then it's a foreign key. Okay, so knowledge check, I just wrote down a few notes on this. So factors when choosing a file management system is the data retrieval speed, the scalability and the security. The retriev- the retrieval speed impacts the experience of the user when interacting with the database, yes. The scalability allows the system to expand more as the capacity is growing. And the security focuses on the confidentiality of the data in the database. And now the database operations, so SQL queries identify what data should be retrieved and how the data should be manipulated.
All that studying we did, passed it, I passed my objective assessment, y'all, on the first try, yeah. So pass my class, I'm officially done with intro to IT, so now I'm gonna be moving on to my next class, which is. Web development foundation, so that's my second class in my debris, my degree program, let's go, let's go. This is my first class and I'm not gonna lie, like I was so nervous like about taking the, the proctored exam. And all that stuff, like I was very nervous because I've never done that before, to be honest with you, like I've never taken a proctored exam before. So I was just a little bit nervous and I hadn't done that in so long because I'm self-taught, so everything that I had learned initially about, you know. Web development or anything like that, like they were all self-taught, so I never had to test, you know what I mean? So I was a little nervous, but y'all like, okay. Your girl's over here doing it, like no, for real, like hold on now, like yes, you're self-taught, but baby, you can do this. Like you're getting a degree in this babe, like and who's gonna stop you, like. There it is, y'all, objective assessment, attempt one, which is today three twelve, pass. Yes, sir, course passed, yes, sir. Y'all, thank you God, yes, like. I was still having imposter syndrome even as a self-taught developer, but now I'm in school for it and I'm like. Yo, girl, you're really doing this, like you're about to get your bachelor's degree in software engineering, like you're doing this. Like you can't say that you can't do this or you don't know how to, cuz you're doing it. Yeah, like it's a different level, I know it's only the first class and maybe somebody else might be looking at me like, whatever. Baby, I'm a wife, I have two children, like my life is not at all just willy-nilly chilling, laying around all day. Like son, I'm busy, I am busy, I'm working part-time as a developer, so literally like I'm with my kids all day. Virtual learning, rotating them out, getting my youngest from school, all the while I'm trying to, you know, work a part-time job. Find a full-time job and I'm doing school and so I feel like this was just such a big accomplishment for me, like I did this. Like even in the midst of like my busy schedule, I passed a class, like. I passed a class in college, like in, you know, the, the, the.
I passed a class in college, like in, you know, the 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 place in life where I am. So like, yeah, I'm really just feeling like if I can do this, I can do anything, like, I'm getting my degree. Hands down, we're doing this, okay? So let's go for the ride, and if you're getting your degree, come along, let's go, okay? I'm gonna be here studying, you know, studying. I'm gonna be making videos where I'm literally studying and I'm going over my notes and I'm reading, you know, reading from my notes and creating, you know, examples in my head that can help me remember, you know, the coursework. Join me, if you guys are in the same program, feel free to join me. Um it's only gonna help if we all have a community that we can, you know, share information with and bounce ideas off of. So the more the merrier, if you have any commentary, any questions about how the assessment was, feel free to drop them in the comments. I will make a video answering all of the questions about my experience with the proctor, my experience with the software, and how the pro- the process is of getting into your assessment, connecting with the proctor, the ID verification, and just kind of like the process. I finished my exam in an hour. So um I believe we started at twelve, the first like fifteen, twenty minutes they're verifying. They're, you know, um they're having you show your entire room, so all of those things. So really, I didn't start until about twelve twenty, twelve thirty, and I finished at one twenty. So um so, yeah. I had to let that out, y'all don't even know how happy I am, like, this really just reignited a fuel in me. Like, sis, you you are doing this, like, you can do this, you're smart enough to get a degree in engineering. You've been, you know, doing web development, you've been troubleshooting applications for the last two years with no official credentials. But baby, now we're getting the credentials to back up the knowledge, okay? Now you can't tell me that I don't know, baby, because I know, and I'm learning, and I'm growing, and I'm doing this, yes, yes. I'll back when I'm in my next class, and so my next class is Web Development Foundation. So the next time I see you, um I will show you what that class looks like, what the course content looks like, and what we're gonna be working with, let's go, until the next one.